Okay, good. We're good to go. All right. Oh, I get to do this? I love doing that. All right, this is the zoning board of appeals Tuesday, August 16th. I will kick this off by reading the governor's message, which I actually brought reading glasses. Pursuant to chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question comment prior to or during the meeting to jbattersby, that's J.B.A.T.T.E.R.S.B.Y. at northandoverma.gov. The question comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. All right, with that, call to order, and we'll start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, first order of business, acceptance of last month's minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve, or do I hear any changes to be made?
I move that we approve.
Yeah, second. All right. Voice vote, all in favor, accept the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just for the record, none. Okay, passes unanimously. First item tonight, continued public hearing of 161 Campbell Road. Justin McCarthy, come on up. And I guess we should do this, name and address, and I understand you want to withdraw without prejudice. Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Only that I'm sorry.
I urge you.
Okay. All right then. Any other internals?
We need a vote, we need to vote.
Is that a public hearing?
Yeah.
All right, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion to close the public meeting.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? All right, internal discussion, anybody? Or do I hear a motion to?
I move that we accept this withdrawal.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, good. Thank you. Which brings us to item four, 33 Martin Avenue.
Good evening. My name's Tim Muck. I live at 33 Martin Ave. With my mother and father. We are requesting to add on to our existing house of, I guess you guys have the floor plan, but basically, we are looking to add extra living space above the garage and behind the garage. We've been living there since 1994, and it's time to do some updates and maintenance of the house. I am recently moving back from Hong Kong. I've been living there for eight years and basically coming home to help my folks with the house and bring my wife and daughter over. I guess, any questions or anything like that? Or do I, I don't, I'm really not sure what I have to go over.
No, you just kind of gave us your introductory statement. Anything you want to say, feel free to say, and then we will ask you questions.
I guess the variance that I'm asking is into the backyard, which I still have space behind there, but it's going to be a four-seasons room. And then we're going to go above for extra living space.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And let me just take a quick look at this. The variance was?
Six feet.
Six feet. Okay, thank you. Let me ask you a first question. I looked at the plan, and did I read this correctly or incorrectly, that as part of the upward addition, you're putting in a kitchen, bathroom, bedrooms?
Yes.
All right. So my first question is to the building inspector, which is if he's putting in kitchen, bathroom up on the sideboard, doesn't that make it the in-law apartment thing? No?
You have as many kitchens and bathrooms as you want in the house.
Okay.
It's the separation of it from the rest of the house, correct?
Okay.
And there's no doors.
Ah, excellent, okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Don't tell my wife you can have as many kitchens as you want. She always says we should have separate kitchens. Okay, thank you. All right, let's open it up for questions. Are you? So are you also doing an addition in front to enclose the front entry?
So we're adding a, what do they call it, farmer's porch?
Okay. Because on the plan, it says new enclosed entry, and it shows a, well, I can't tell, but it's just a roof.
Yeah, it's just the roof to the farmer's porch over.
So it's not an enclosed?
No, 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 there's no enclosed entry.
So my question, I'm on page two here, and I'd like to just better understand the, this shows me the line of the existing roof?
Yep.
And then the new addition?
Yep.
And so, can you elaborate on?
Yeah, sure. So right now, the existing is our garage.
Oh.
And then we're going to raise above the garage, and then put extra living space above the garage.
Okay, and then will it be consistent with the roof of the house?
It will go down maybe, I think it's about a foot, so it won't be in line. It will just be below the existing roof to the main house?
It will not exceed the existing roof?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We did not read the legal notice. I guess we should do that now.
Should I, should I read it in?
No, I asked Stephen Clark.
Oh, okay, he's already.
Yeah, my mistake.
Legal notice, notice is hereby given. At the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, August 16, 7:30 p.m. To all parties interested in the petition of Wing Womack and Kathleen E. Mac for property at 33 Martin Avenue. Map 045.G parcel 0012, North Andover, Mass. 0145 in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover Zoning Bylaw, Section 195, Attachment 3, Table 2. Summary of dimensional requirements for one rear setback in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of constructing in addition onto the existing home. Specifically, applicant has requested a rear setback needing a relief of six feet. Rear setback proposed is 24. Rear setback required per table 2 is 30 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of Zoning Department located 120 North, North Main, North Andover, Mass. Wednesday and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 to 4:00. Tuesday, from the hours of 8:00 to 5:30, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. By the order of the Board of Appeals, Ron R. Fagan, Chair.
Thank you, Stephen. And my apologies for missing the procedural step. All right, were you in on all the questions? We'll just resume where we left off.
No, I, oh, I was going to say, okay. So I drove by your house, you know, just like to look at what we're going to be talking about. You have a large tree in your backyard. Well, that, either you or your neighbors do. Okay, isn't that?
That's in my backyard, yes.
Okay.
So.
I was just curious, knowing that the addition is in the back.
Yep.
Does the tree stay, or does the tree go?
The tree's going to stay.
Okay.
So basically, if you look at the tree, the addition is going to be behind the garage, so as you pass by, you see the two-door garage. It's going to be directly behind that.
Yeah, I was just inquiring, minds wanting to know.
You're welcome. I see it after we raise it.
Thank you.
Sure.
So the, you know, the official clearance that we have for giving a variance in the first place is that it's because you have some kind of specific shape, soil, or topography that requires that variance, that basically suggests that, you know, the zoning law should not apply to this specific case because of that shape, soil, or topography. So for your plot, what is that?
To be honest with you, I have no idea. I don't, I wasn't told that I need to come up with the kind of soil, but, I mean, I live, I guess, I'm not in wetlands or anything like that, so we had a surveyor come out and take a look at the land, make sure that we were within.
So to give you an example of what I mean, you know, if you had a very narrow piece of property, right, that was, that would have made fitting your house into the side setback requirements impossible, then that would be a, you know, and through no fault of your own, it's just the way that that lot was drawn, then it would be, that would be a reason for us to give a variance. And so, in this case, you have an almost perfectly square lot, and so that doesn't as easily apply here. And so, you know, we need to have some kind of reason to justify our, you know, it helps that it's not a huge variance, but we need to have, in our mind, some kind of reason for why specifically this plot of land should be exempted from the rules.
So I guess when you put the four-seasons room, that's going to help with the living area above. If you do it too narrow, right, the shape of the house will be distorted based off of the other properties around us. And then, I guess, from a symmetrical perspective, it will just look odd.
Okay.
Because you don't want to have a nine-by-24.
Okay.
Right, so it'll just kind of be like a rectangle type of thing.
Okay.
So my architect suggested that we square it off a bit, and, you know, we asked for the permission to do it that way.
Okay. And, you know, I mean, I will note that you are, you know, on, basically in all dimensions, almost pressed up against the limit, right? Like, there's not any particular direction that you can grow that would not run into this kind of issue. The, because the front setback, you're right at the 30 feet, basically, and then the sides, you've got maybe five feet of room to spare. But as you said, then that would make it longer, right? It would make it less symmetrical.
Okay. All right, other questions?
So on the front side setback, it looks like you're half a foot off. Is that, maybe this question of Paul, is that de minimis?
Well, it's grandfathered in, right? Because that's not changing.
It was just covered.
Oh, the porch is already there.
Yeah, the porch is new.
No, but the steps are.
Yeah, the steps are.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, so the steps don't count.
Between, well, you're, I couldn't, from the street, I couldn't see, is there a fence between this where the variance is being requested, the 24 versus 30? Is your backyard a butt, your neighbor, is there a fence there?
There's a fence.
Okay.
Has there been any input from any of the neighbors?
I actually have one of my neighbors here.
Oh, would you like to come in?
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll hold off on that, and we'll put them up there.
But I actually, I have gone to every one of my neighbors, because we've, between living there for so long and new neighbors coming in, and me coming back, I've gone and introduced myself and told them exactly what we're doing, and they're all very supportive.
That makes things easier.
So I just, I'm not, I'm not clear on the front setback.
Yeah, yeah, because I realize, so you were saying that the steps don't count towards it, right? So what about the proposed porch? Does that need a variance?
Is it there now or not?
No, it's not there. But it's within the, it goes to the edge of the stairs, which is six feet, so it still has that.
So you have stairs there right now? That's what he's asking, is there an existing structure there?
There's an existing structure there.
So the stairs, would that grandfather in the porch?
He's not going, he's not.
He's not going past it?
He's not going past the side, he's actually set back one step from his setbacks. That's what basically gives him that.
Okay, there we go.
I just, if you needed it, I'd rather have you ask for it so that it doesn't become a problem later on, that's all.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you. No, do you have?
No.
Okay. So thank you, and now I'll ask for anybody in the audience who would like to offer a comment. I'd love to hear from the abutter.
Well, I'm in the butter.
Okay, just start with name and address, please.
So my name is John Mendonza, and I'm at 49 Martin Ave, which is right next door, even though the numbers are 33 and 49, there's nobody in between us. And I've lived there for 28 years, and we've been neighbors, and I think that their addition is appropriate. I think it's well-designed, and I think it meets what I consider the appropriate need for a growing family. And so I'm very supportive of the addition, and I think you should pass it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
All right.
You said you went to the, all the abutters, so the people behind you?
Yep, so Mr. Martino, I talked to him, Chief Dolan, I also talked to him, or the rest of the projects, Chief Dolan. Sorry.
So behind us is the Martino family that will be directly behind the new structure, and they're very supportive. And then I talked to the ex-fire chief, Dolan, and he's very supportive as well.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Any more public discussion? Do I hear a motion to close public discussion?
I move to close public comment.
Do I hear a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed? All right, board discussion. Comments?
I drove by, and, I mean, it all seems to make very good sense to me, and I like, it's very nice that you went out and talked to your neighbors about it. The fact that you have support to me, those are all favorable signs.
I mean, yeah, I think the neighbors approving makes it relatively easy. At that point, it becomes a victimless crime.
No, I'm fine with it. It's not much relief that they're asking for, and I think it would look nice and fits there within the neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you. I just didn't want to, I didn't know if I had to say.
Oh, okay. And the only I would add is, I think the reason you're doing it is great. Absolutely great. So I, any more on the internal discussion, board discussion? Do I hear a motion to close discussion?
I move that we, that we approve the request for variance. I guess we need to read it and affirm it, don't we?
All right, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
So you'll make the motion.
I will do my best at this one here.
All right, we'll help.
The applicant is requesting a variance of six feet for, to construct in addition onto the existing home.
Yeah, I think you have to do this in form of a motion.
So I move that we, that we accept the variance, and then you can just read the second paragraph, and that'll?
Okay. I'll second then, your motion.
Oh, do you want me to read it? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Why don't you do it?
So I move that we accept the variance pursuant to the Town and North Andover Zoning Bylaw, Section 195, Attachment 3, Table 2. Summary of dimensional requirements for one rear setback in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of constructing in addition onto the existing home. Specifically, applicant has requested a rear setback needing relief variance of six feet. And referencing maps by, let's see, Alexander Cruciolli dated August 9, 2022, and drawings by Martha McGuinness dated June 6, 2022, pages 1 through, we've got 1 through 10?
Yeah, then two after that.
Plus a page marked X, plus a floor sketch, well, this is, no, that's a, yeah, that's a floor sketch just from the, from public records. But I think that one we can leave out or not. So, yeah, I think that covers the plan.
Thank you. Sounds like a great motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of approving the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Variance approved unanimously. Thank you very much for going. All right. I'm not going to blow this one. Are you ready? You got it?
Yes.
All right. Next item, number five, new public hearing for 40 Patriot Street. Would the clerk please read the notice? Ron, Ron, yes. Yes, of course.
I just wanted to, so the next person just remind them that they have to have a good notice.
Yeah, I will do that, yeah. Thanks, Ann. Okay, clerk, read the notice, please.
Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, August 16, at 7:30 p.m. To all parties interested in the petition of James J. Curran and Linda L. Curran for the property at 40 Patriot Street. Map 013.0 parcel 0023, North Andover, Mass. 01845 in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to the Town and North Andover Zoning Bylaw, Section 195, 7.3 yards setback. For one left side setback in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of installing a storage shed on the property. Specifically, applicant has requested a left side setback needing a relief of nine feet. Side setback proposed is 11 feet. Side setback required is 20 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 to 4:00. Tuesday, from 8:00 to 5:30, and Friday, 8:00 to 11:30 a.m. By the Board of Appeals, Ron R. Fagan, Chair.
Thank you very much. And you're current. So before we start, I will just inform you that there are only four of us here tonight. Normally, there would be five people voting, so that means a vote has to be unanimous. So I leave it to your choice whether you would like to move forward with just the four people voting.
No, keep going.
Okay, all right. So you're going, all right. Go ahead, then. Please introduce yourself.
We can also, I assume, file a continuance, should we want to move vote to another time.
We could. I suppose, but let's see where this goes.
I think it's a little simpler than the one that was just here. I'm not worried about that. My name is Jim Curtin. I live at 40 Patriot Street. My wife, Linda. We've been there since 88. So we raised two kids in the school system. We've been in the town, I've been in town since 75. We've been working on this house since we bought it. We've done a thousand things to it. We've always gotten our building permits and all that stuff. All we want to do, basically, is put in a shed. We need more room. It's getting harder with the, we got this little plastic enclosure to hold the snow throw. It's getting harder and harder to just get there to clean out the yard and then to hit the driveway. So this building is gonna, it's only 8 by 16. It's gonna let me open the doors, excuse me, come right down the ramp, clean out the back, to the back porch, so I've got two exits for fire. I used to be a firefighter, so that's always a big thing with me. And then I can go right out the gate and do the driveway. It's gonna make snow throwing so much easier. I'm getting a lot older. I'm 71 now, and it's getting tougher and tougher. It really is.
I know.
It's basically a thing of, the law calls for 20 feet from the fence. I can't put it 20 feet from the fence. It would block the gate to the driveway. There's just not enough room. It's only 100 by 100 square feet. So my backyard's kind of packed, but we're very happy with it. A lot of staycations. It's just, I want to do this. We need this, the room, and I just need you to give me the nine feet. I can go 11 feet and still have enough to come down the ramp and clear what I want to clear. And I don't know if nine feet's a really big deal to you guys or not, but that's where it stands. We don't, we're not making any serious changes. I've only got one abutter. He's, he doesn't care. His name is Bickle, Dave Bickle. The backyard is Grogan's Field. And I asked all the baseball players, and none of them care.
Give him something to aim for, right?
Yeah, there you go. Well, that's an old story. Somebody told his kid, if you could put Jimmy's window out, he'd get you 50 bucks. But on the left side is Gilbert Street, and then Patriot in the front, so I don't have a lot of people up against me. And I come from the city, and that's awesome. I just need the room to stick that shed in there and make my life a little easier. That's all I'm asking for.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, questions?
Yeah, so I, I want to ask you to check me on my eyesight here. So I don't, I didn't see, you don't have a garage, correct?
No, no.
Okay, so I think that, and then your yard is fenced in. And so the shed is inside of the yard.
Yes.
And by the way, I like your location. I've never been back on your street before, but I, you're right, you're the, if someone hits a, maybe a great home run, they might end up in your yard.
They'd have to hit a good one, but it could be done.
So I, so to me, I, when I observed that you didn't have a garage, it's like, that was, wow. So I understand.
Also, the fence on the back is slightly elevated. The ground goes down towards Patriot Street. So that's an eight-foot fence, but probably, if you're looking, you wouldn't see like 10 or 12 feet. You wouldn't see the shed. You might see it from Patriot Street, but I don't think you'll even see it from Gilbert or the park.
Thank you.
So this is a shed that you're purchasing and just dropping on?
Yeah, we got an eastern shed.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, they're gonna, I think they're gonna put it together, but they're gonna just bring it in and we're getting the ground squared away for it.
Yeah, I'm, I can't tell you how many years I drove to the School of Dance there. How many years I did that, and how many baseball games my son played in that field, so I'm very familiar with that area. You were easy to find.
Well, my son grew up there, and then he went to play football, and it was like, he just walked around the fence. And it was great.
And I will say, just, you know, for the record, I appreciate you even coming here, because a lot of folks just drop sheds in, and then they get in trouble later for having had it there, and then come in asking us for forgiveness, so thank you for coming in.
My first reaction, to be honest, was I was angry. I was mad. Why the heck do I have to, you know, all this and that? But the law's the law. I mean, I was a firefighter. I understand the law. Some of them don't make sense, but you need them. It's just the way the world works.
Zoning often does not make sense.
I agree. How tall is the shed? How tall is the shed?
I think it's eight feet.
Well, to the peak, it's nine, like nine foot one and a half inches. You'll probably only see about 13 inches of it at the exact.
Okay.
Like I said, you probably will only see that from Patriot.
Yeah, I think so. I, I, I won't buy that.
The fence is up.
Yeah, I won't buy there also. That's, I couldn't really see in your backyard. Yeah, I won't buy there also, and that's, I, I couldn't really see in your backyard, it had to go with the fencing, so.
If you knocked on the door, I would have hooked you in, I'm usually home.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm retired now, so knocking on the door, I'll show you.
Um, just from what I've seen in the past, I mean, the, it makes perfect sense, but the variance as a percentage, that's a very significant variance request, but under the circumstances, it really doesn't apply, but normally, that just is a, seems to be sort of a, um, when, when people are making a request, the more variance they're requesting, the greater that percentage is, usually, the tougher it becomes. In the, in your case, again, with the fence and no garage, and, uh, and, and, you know, the design of the shed and the color, and, I, I mean, it all makes good sense to me. But I just wanted to point out that when I read it, and I looked at the variance, I thought, oh, boy, and then I went and looked at your house, and, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will say, if you're building an extension of your house, and you wanted to build it nine feet from the edge when the requirement is twenty, we'd probably have a lot more questions, right? But a shed is a little.
Well, we've already done the second floor, we did that fifteen years ago, so it used to be a three-bedroom ranch, all those houses were.
Yeah.
And I'm never leaving there, except, you know, I'm not stretching, but, but other than that, I'm gonna be on that corner until, you know, forever.
So the back of this lot is raised, and you said it slopes down towards your yard?
Yeah, the ground comes from the park, and it just kinda slopes down just a bit, all the way down to, you know, which is great for drainage, but.
That sounds like a hard shed.
Yeah, even, we, uh, as we were saying earlier, we need, you need to ju- we need to justify why we're granting it, so.
Yeah.
That'll work.
I, I would like to say before I leave that the people downstairs, there's two of them here, they're awesome, they, like I said, I got angry first. I'm just a guy, and they counted me down, talked me through it, and Jennifer was awesome, and a couple of the other girls in the office, and they were, they were really nice, it, uh...
That's good to hear, that's good to hear.
You know, it helps when you're up against something, you have no idea what you, I had no clue what I was talking about.
Now, thank you for mentioning that, that's very appreciated, thank you.
Just, I just saw you guys in all they're doing.
No, that's good to know, good to know. All right, any other questions for the curtains?
No.
I have none, Jen, we heard from anybody?
I have no comments.
Okay, so do I hear?
Just make one.
Yes.
Yeah, our usual setbacks on an R four are fifteen, cuz he's on a corner lot, they make it go to twenty.
Ah.
So that's why it's a little different, he, he would have been only asking for a four.
Gotcha.
But being on a corner lot, it, it switches over to twenty, so that's why it's on a little bit more, but going to a street, and there's no neighbors there, it's, it's kind of, that's the best of it.
Yeah, and it's, and it's short, it's not like he's building three stories on the edge there, right?
All right, do I hear a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, none opposed, and discussion, I'll start, I'm very comfortable with this, I mean, it's, it's, if you're gonna do this, this, this property is perfectly situated. You got a street, you got a fence, you got a ballpark behind you, there's like nobody to bother here, so, uh, I'm, I'm very comfortable with this one.
Yeah, it's a shed, if it was, if, again, if it was an extension on his house, I would have a lot more questions, and we'd be, you know, having a different kind of discussion, but like, it's a shed, it's fine.
Yeah, to me, with no garage, it's, uh, that's, especially accentuates the ni- his need, so I'm comfortable with that.
Right?
I'm good.
All right, um, who wants to do the, do I, is it time for the motion?
I think so.
All right, you want, I'll relieve you, do you wanna do it?
Sure, all right, I, I move that we accept the, um, the, well, that we approve the variance of, uh, James and Linda Curtin for their property at Forty Patriot Street pursuant to Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five point, uh, dash seven-point-three yards setbacks for one left side setback in the R four zoning district for the purpose of installing a storage shed on the property. Specifically, applicant has requested a left side setback needing a relief variance of nine feet. Uh, and we are going to reference, um, a hand-drawn map that, uh, is on top of a plot written by Scott Giles dated four-one-ninety-nine. Uh, I don't, I believe the, the handwritten additions are since then, um, are there any other drawings, I don't think that, I think that's the only one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, that's the only drawing, easy one.
All right, do I hear a second?
I have a second.
All right, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none, it is approved, thank you very much, appreciate you coming. All right, which brings us to, so item six, discussion, um, so I'll, I'll do that. Uh, the next meeting is the, the September meeting is the thirteenth, so I will be in surgery that day, um, getting a foot repaired, I will not be here.
Good luck.
Yeah, Jen, you.
You can do a remote, you know.
The surgery or?
I'm gonna be on so many drugs, maybe it'd be better if I was on so many drugs.
In the recovery room.
And, uh, Alexandria was going to chair, but she has to go to Arizona, they changed her flight, so, as has happened to a lot of people now, so she won't be here.
I won't be here.
And you won't be here, so the suggestion is that we, um, postpone the meeting until two weeks later, September twenty-seventh, whereas you're a maybe.
I'm a maybe, yeah.
Um, and I don't know.
And Jim will be sworn in.
Jim will be sworn in, and, uh...
Laura will hopefully be sworn in.
Hope he's sworn in, and, uh, Alan should be back, um, and Alexander will be here to chair, so we should be well-staffed for that meeting.
Even if I can't make it.
Yeah, all right, so, does that require a vote? I will vote on it.
Yep.
Um, again, I can't speak to Alan's calendar, I'm assuming he'll be here too, all right, so do we, uh, are we all, uh... I will move that we postpone the September meeting from September thirteenth to September twenty-seventh.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And none opposed?
Do we need to, uh, notify any applicants so that they shift all of their notices, I, hopefully, no one's had any go out for the next meeting, I guess.
We haven't, um, posted the legal notices yet.
Okay.
Okay, and we, I assume we have to do something with the town to, anything we have to do in Town Hall to do that?
Um, I just have to confirm that we have a, um, due approval.
Okay.
If not here, then we can.
All right, all right, okay, um, item seven, thank you, folks, appreciate it. Item seven, miscellaneous correspondence, nothing we have to do here, I have a letter from Brock and Scott regarding a mortgage, Daniel D., as I'm, uh, butcher's pronunciation, Dubey.
Dubey.
Dubey, and Mary Ann Dubey, um, it looks like there's gonna be a foreclosure sale on their property, no action we have to take here, just FYI.
All right.
Where do we get those?
Hmm?
Where do we get those?
I have no idea, I have no idea, because it's.
Is that one of the ones that town has the first option to buy?
Yes.
Isn't it because of the, uh, is that low, is it?
There are four little housing trusts.
For the low-cost housing?
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we bought these properties, and then we sell them at a reduced price, and then the folks that occupy them, there's rules about what they can sell the house for themselves, they can't like, you know, buy it at a low price and then sell it for five-hundred thousand dollars more, um, but yeah, it is.
Why it's a zoning board issue, I don't know.
Yeah. Some board in town to recognize it, I guess.
So we might have ok- had to okay the building originally, or something, it could have been something that was okayed by the zoning, so, like I said, it's not a hundred percent clear.
But yeah, I'm.
But it's a notification that we have first option to buy any of these, you know, like that.
All right, well, in any event, we, we checked the box on that one, and, which brings us to item eight, which is adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Second? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All right, none opposed, meeting is adjourned, thank you, folks, appreciate it.